Why would you maybe like to set the stage and start things off for us?
Sure, thank you Mayor Carter.
Mr. Shields, I'm not sure you're on microphone right now.
No, thank you.
Before you do that, or as you're doing that, I'd like to read a brief disclosure as well, which should be applicable later when we talk about the school budget. After reviewing this matter and discussing with the city attorney pursuant to opportunity code 2.2-3112 and 3115G, I would like to disclose that my wife Karen schools, works for the Falls Church Public Schools, and as a city Falls Church School Board employee, she's a member of a group of more than three individuals who are affected by the city council's vote on the budget. However, based on my review, I believe I can participate and consider this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest. Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Shields.
Ms. Conley.
Yes, Ms. Conley.
All right. I also have a disclosure, and I am an employee of Falls Church City Public Schools, and discussion this evening will pertain to my employer. However, I am a member of a group of three or more individuals affected by this matter, and I attest that I can participate in the discussion fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Shields.
Okay, thank you.
If you have a disclosure of your own, but feel free to.
Not yet.
We all disclose that we have multiple children.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. We're all conflicted. The Cindy Messer is going to take the lead in the CIP, and then after we've had a good discussion on the CIP, we'll talk about the school operating budget. So those are the two agenda items for tonight. I was asked at the beginning of tonight's meeting to provide just a quick report, and maybe the mayor and chair of the school board would also like to give a brief report on the progress of the process planning committee. The school planning effort is very important to the capital improvements program as a whole, and our planning for that campus, as well as economic development on that site, is moving ahead and is important for tonight's discussions as well. Would either of you like to speak to it briefly first, and I can provide just a quick update?
Ahead with the update.
Okay. We've met at this point on four morning meetings, and the time has been very productive. We have, at this point, a draft process roadmap that is still being, has a lot of work still to do on it, but at least we have a structure that we're working on. And we anticipate that we'll have a report out to the full council and school board in April. The initial deadline was for April 1st. The committee is going to ask for a little bit of additional time, but I think the anticipation is to be able to get the report out in the month of April and then proceed with implementation of that process roadmap after that period of time.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Vice Mayor Snyder?
I don't, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Cindy?
Good evening, council, Planning Commission, and School Board. It's my honor to be back here once again with the presentation of the CIP. It will be a big presentation, so I'm going to try to move through it quickly. There will be some slides in the presentation that you saw in Mr. Shields' proposed budget presentation. I put it here so they're consolidated in one place, but I'm not going to go through in much detail on them. And then, of course, be willing to answer questions. The Planning Commission Chair and several of the Planning Commission members are here to be able to also comment for you on their rationale for their recommendation. And so as we go into this, this is a reminder that we build the CIP so we can execute your adopted vision, the comprehensive plan, and your financial policies. The three goals, as Mr. Shields said on budget presentation night, reinvest in our infrastructure, prioritize needs over five years because there's significant needs, and maintain our financial strength. The Planning Commission had a very deliberative, intense, and comprehensive process this year, so I wanted to note that they conducted three public hearings and, in addition, three work sessions, which is more work sessions than they have in the past. It was very theme-focused on the most intense issues, and it included quite a review of the, detailed review of the financial policies as well, under city charter for new council members' information. The Planning Commission needs to opine on the CIP for compliance with the comp plan, but also the financial feasibility. Their recommendations were built on what I presented February 3rd with the modifications that you see highlighted on the screen, and we will go through them in more detail. But it included delaying by one year the school process projects while the process planning and the roadmap evolves, the library facility adjustment, which I'll go in more detail, supporting, funding the two grant positions for transportation that the Director of Public Works mentioned to council on Monday night's work session. And also, they had an opportunity to review the same information you all saw February 10th on the status of the City Hall Public Safety projects, and they took a specific vote recommending council continue to proceed immediately with the already-approved projects versus any other alternatives. I've put up here the two utility slides, which will not be the in-depth discussion tonight, but were available for questions, and the Director of Public Works is present this evening. These are the same slides you saw during the budget presentation for sanitary sewer, stormwater utility. This is a map that'll give you a sense of where this five-year CIP is proposing to invest in the infrastructure for the City of Falls Church. Do you all want me to turn the lights off for those of you looking at this screen? The LEDs are much better. So what you'll see here is, the laser that's not working, you have the purple school facilities, and you'll see something at all of the school facilities within the five-year plan. You also have two specific stormwater projects, and then, of course, repair of lines that could be throughout the city. The pink is representing the investment in the infrastructure and the planning opportunity areas for South Washington in particular, down here. And then the green is representing the parks, and so that would be the Howerty Hermann, as well as any of the park master planning. This map is in the budget book, where the CIP begins on page 241, and also in the CIP notebook that everybody got that was the working document for the Planning Commission. This is a chart we've seen before. It takes the pie of CIP funding and allocates it to the functions. School facilities, by the virtue of how big and how many they are, is 70% of the pie, followed by transportation. Next would be general government facilities of that. The library, 8 million, is the largest project. These we saw on the proposed budget night. It gives you a highlight of the projects in the first year of the CIP, for which you'd be appropriating money for 15, and then the other four years are the planning, long-term vision. And so there's continued investment in facility improvements, public safety, then the parks. Here, I broke out the $200,000, so you can see part of it is for the Howerty Hermann to bring forward and align with the daylighting stormwater project, and then continued investment in all the parks' master plan, and then re-upping the open space 1 million that has lapsed, so there's resources available when an opportunity avails itself to the city. For the library facility project, I wanted to spend a few minutes to highlight this project because it is a change project in the proposed budget before you from what the Library Board of Trustees submitted. So in summary, and we do have at least four of the Library Board of Trustees members here and the library director to be available to answer questions as needed. Their original request was to start in FY '16 for a full teardown and rebuild of a new library for just under 19 million, and it would have parking, shared offsite in some city concept, and the current square footage is about 18,000 square feet for the library, and it would go to 33. In the proposed CIP, which the city manager supported, the Planning Commission's recommendation would be to target more of a redesign, renovation, and a smaller expansion, allowing more time to, over the next year, really look at some options. The Planning Commission was concerned on a teardown rebuild, the size in terms of scope and the community, the lack of parking, so there needs to be a parking plan, whether it's onsite or shared for this project, seeking additional community input. And the dollar amount is 8 million to be in FY '17 to allow more time for the project to evolve. There was clearly support for the value of the library, and so that wasn't the question. They just felt a little more time for design and rightsizing for the City of Falls Church. The 8 million is built off of last year's CIP dollar amount, which was more an expansion and a renovation concept, and the Planning Commission knew that dollar amount had not been updated, so they escalated it for a dollar amount until some further analysis could occur. For transportation, we've had many different council retreats and work sessions on transportation. So this is, this year, a special fund. We've had a lot of discussion on the 70 and 30% funding from NBT-A, and this is designed to help implement it. There is a five-year work plan, and in detail, this you'll find in Tab 8 of your CIP notebook. There's a ledger slice pullout that will show you the projects as how they'd be phased over the five-year for design and construction, so that it can tie to the existing staff, resources, and workload. The proposed budget does include two FTEs that would be funded with grant dollars, so it's not local tax funding, that would help us to move the existing projects forward sooner, and then allow us to use a whole lot of ongoing funding that's not allocated yet in this proposed CIP. It is very important that the transportation plans are driving the CIP, so as you know from the town hall meeting, from those that were able to be there Saturday and past work sessions, the comp plan chapter is being updated for mobility for all modes, looking from automobiles to walking to pedestrians to biking. And so that and that, as well as the area plans, the two that are adopted and the one that's under development, can actually help drive the projects, and we need the infrastructure for those things that can benefit economic development. This budget does not propose the commercial industrial CNI tax that's authorized onto the state to fund transportation, or the equivalent option as part of your tax base. We have included a per budget, council budget guidance, as debt-funded, using fund balance to fund it for FY '15. Ongoing staff, recommend staff, the council consider options for FY '16 on, so it's sustainable. Specific projects for transportation are fully outlined in Tab 8 of your CIP notebook, but they include three bridges, numerous bus shelters through the bus shelter master plan for 29 and 7, four traffic signals, roadbed reconstruction, and some ADA accessibility for neighborhood traffic calming, and then investment in two of the planning opportunity areas, most significantly the South Washington, which includes the intermodal traffic signals and pedestrian crossings and streetscape improvements. This part of the CIP is very intensive. FY '15, you'll see $12 million in that. Some of it is reallocation of previous grants into South Washington, and then it's the new revenue sharing and 30% money. It is a great leverage because you're putting in less than a million for that 12 million in FY '15, and over the five-year period for 36 million, it's only about 5 million of local funding. This is a slide you saw in your budget. It summarizes those functional areas in the first year and the five years, so you can see the total size of the CIP. And then you see it by the sources of funding. Once again, a large amount of grant dollars, and then, in this case, you can see the need for funding and determining the school financing plan, which was the opening comments.
It's like we're about to be called to a fire.
I know.
Oh, okay.
I don't have my phone here, so I may be part of the triggering on the.
Yeah, yeah, that is impressive.
Although it's not good that there's an amber alert, but at least we are aware of So as we move from the projects and some of the specific information, I wanted to highlight some of the financial components of the CIP. Then I'm going to circle back to the school projects in particular because it's so tied to the redevelopment and the planning of the new land in the city. So this is the fund balance, and what's important to note here is that this CIP draws down the fund balance to the 17% policy. So we are using significantly one-time money, so we get back into reinvesting in the CIP, and also ensuring that you're in policy compliance. There's been a lot of questions about money above the 17%, so I wanted to highlight that for you. This slide gives you a perspective of what the debt service has been for the city from 2006 to the proposed 2019. The blue line, the lowest line, is our existing debt. If we did nothing else, no additional capital investment. That is a pretty flat level line, so what that indicates for us, I think, because of the pent-up pressures that you see in the CIP, that if we continue that flat, we're not reinvesting into the infrastructure of the city. So you see the pink line shows the new capital projects, the debt service, and the proposed CIP, still within the green line, which is the 12% policy line. That debt service, this is the same information that Mr. Shields had in his proposed budget. It shows you that for FY '15, the debt service is about 3.6% of the total operating of the city's budget. Over a five-year period, it increases the CIP just under 3 million for debt service. That equates to about 8.2 cents on the current tax rate value. This analysis, just as a reminder, is not including the school projects because we need to determine the financing plan, and I'll clarify, it does include the high school and middle school. The CIP does include TJ's 2 million for HVAC and the 8 million for Mount Daniel for Phase 2 funding. So then to speak a little bit more specifically to that, you all have just had an update on the Planning Process Committee. The CIP does include $250,000 pay-go funding to staff consultant and needed staff resources, so we can do that properly and move it along forward. The school facilities are in the CIP per the proposed budget at FY '17 for the high school. The school board asked for FY '16, so it's one year later, and the dollar amount's the same as the school board's request. Mary Ellen Henderson has also moved out one year, as I noted earlier, per the Planning Commission's discussion, but the dollar amount is the school board request. These projects will need a financing plan because if you were trying to debt service all of that 105 million, we'd be way past affordability and definitely way past the 12% policy. The synthetic turf and track is also in FY '18 to align with Mary Ellen Henderson. The dollar amount is as requested. I know there's been a lot of community dialogue and discussion on that, but the way this is set up, because we know the planning group needs work, and we know we need time for roadmap, the recommendation is, is to leave it there for this period because nobody asked for it to be in FY '15 as actually funded, and then refine it when we develop the FY ' '16 CIP, which amazingly be, you all adopt in April, and I'll be starting the staff work in November, so it's about eight months from now, we'll be revisiting this discussion. As I wrap up and turn it back to Mr. Shields for any closing comments that he wants to make on the CIP, I wanted to highlight in two summary slides some key issues that collapses all the things we've just seen. This is a very ambitious CIP, compliant with the comp plan, budget guidance, it's targeting identified needs, but it is very ambitious, both from a staff workload and financial. The facilities is addressing significant reinvestment needs, and although not funded because of the school financing plan and maybe in a different timeline, all the requested school projects are reflected in this five-year planning document, as is the library proposal, although alabot different. The facilities are phased also, besides changing the timing for financing, to be able to phase it for staff capacity. You can't do all of these big projects concurrently. And then, as a reminder, the transportation plan does target implementation, seeing stuff on the ground, so we did a very heavy lift to phase out that work plan and are proposing the new staff, because there are probably, over the five-year period, that 36 million, there's a large amount of that of the new funding that we actually haven't allocated to a project because we wouldn't have the staff resources in current configuration. Some additional opportunities and challenges. This is infrastructure policy focus, very prioritized. It was developed, and it needs to continue to be developed within financial guidance. The CIP will need a plan that's, to need to be plan-driven, transportation chapter, facility master planning, school feasibility studies, comp plan with a very strong, long-term focus. As I noted earlier, one of the challenges of the CIP, it's heavy reliance on one-time funding. That's not an ongoing option if we're going to keep reinvesting into our infrastructure, hence the closing bullet, which requires building the CIP into the tax base, looking at ongoing funding for the NBT-A match, and then developing the school financing plan. Mr. Shields, did you want to add any other comments?
Yep. Sorry. If you could turn on the light. So Cindy said, this is an ambitious CIP. We do have pent-up demand for investment in our capital infrastructure. The council's guidance has been for multiple years now to really try to refocus on capital investment, and the CIP does that. In the transportation area, with the new state money that we're getting, with the council's priority to make the city more walkable and more safe for pedestrians and bicycles in all modes of traffic, I think we're going to be able to move significantly in that direction. And for the first time, we have actual positions funded in the CIP, using grant funds and some of the state funding to help implement those projects, which we really desperately need. In terms of the big picture, to help the council assess our overall financial condition and the affordability of the CIP, I do think we have big challenges there. In the early years of the CIP, it's manageable, but what I've tried to show in the chart that we just passed out is some projections of debt service with some different scenarios. And so this shows our debt service over time from 2013 through 2020. The green bars in the background are our policy, 12% of expenditures, just as a reference point. And then taking the scenarios up from the bottom, the dark blue line is our existing debt service, which you saw in Slide 18 that Cindy just projected. Then the purple line that goes above that is the CIP that includes then debt service for City Hall improvements, library improvements, Mount Daniel, having, you know, the debt for the TJ expansion, and the Cherry Street School on our books. And so that debt service goes to an increase of the $2.9 million that Cindy mentioned, and that's about 8 cents on the tax rate. And so in terms of the big lift that we really need to work on and are working on is to have a financial plan to accomplish the larger expensive needs in the high school and the middle school. And so if you take the green scenario with the red boxes on the top, that's the sort of annoying scenario of, we just fund the whole thing with debt service, which everyone knows we're not going to do. But below that, if you take some scenarios, that orange line with the orange circles, that's a scenario in which we do the high school, the track and turf, total cost 105 million, and we do reduce our debt service with development, and we also factor in the $3.6 million of proffers that we have in hand. I say in hand, that's the North Gate, as well as the Harris Teeter Project and the Reserve at Tenner Hill. So those are pretty safe proffers at this point.
Could you repeat that?
So the $3.6 million in school capital cost proffers is the North Gate, the Harris Teeter proffers, as well as the Reserve at Tenner Hill. And then if you factor in an assumption, which is a very loose assumption, that, but through economic development across the city, but including possibly on the school side as well, that we can actually reduce the debt, the cost of the project in terms of new debt service by $40 million. You can argue with that assumption. It's my assumption. If you don't like it, tell me, and we'll discuss it. But that's where you end up with the orange line, and so that's still, you know, that's pretty robust economic development, and we still have a very steep cost curve. And then the blue scenario there in the middle is a reduced cost for the high school at 85 million. Again, that's my assumption. If you really don't like that one, tell me. I'd take full responsibility for it. But just in terms of modeling, some different scenarios, we still have then that middle scenario of debt service exposure. So in terms of thinking about this five-year planning period in the capital improvements program, we offer this just as illustrative purposes about the challenges that we have in front of us, and we'll continue to work together on financial modeling with the school board, with the council, to refine this. But it's meant for illustrative purposes, simply just to demonstrate the scale of the capital investment that we have in the plan, but also the financial challenges that come with it. And so I wanted to share that.
I'm wondering, Mayor, if you would entertain letting the Chair of the Planning Commission make any closing comments. I didn't ask her in advance, but I thought maybe on behalf of the Planning Commission.
Cindy has put forth our rationalization very well. We worked very, very long on this. We had more work sessions, and we tried to put it in perspective of, is this going to work practically? And although some of the things that we did, we were, it was hard for us to do. Everybody wants to do something with our library, but we felt that what came in from the library had no parking, and you can't have a library without any parking. So we sent them back to the drawing board and said, you need to come back with a plan for that. And when you look at the committee that's meeting now for planning on the Mary Ellen Henderson and High School project, they're still very early in the process, and we didn't think that it was better to put those projects up earlier because the plan wasn't there. And although we had a lot of lobbying about the fields, and we really would like to do the fields as quickly as possible, we know that the plan wasn't there, and we were afraid that, well, we weren't afraid, but we were concerned that we would put this money into the field, and the plan would go ahead more quickly, and then the fields would have to be torn up. So the decisions that we made were difficult because we want to have all of these benefits come to our city, but we felt that we had to look at them in a practical way with long-term planning in our mind, and that's how we came down.
Thank you very much. I know you all put a lot of hard work into it. We certainly appreciate that. How about you, Ms. Kearney? Would you like to discuss the school side of the capital improvement budget at this point, or do you feel?
I think there's really only one thing that we need to discuss. I think we all understand that we're not going to bond $100 million for schools. I think we all understand it's going to take quite some time to plan those projects up there. So I think the only question we have, and I'm going to turn over to Dr. Jones and Tom Horn, who's our athletic director at the high school. We want to make sure that we all in this room have a level set about the fields and the condition they're in now, and what needs to be done, and the ramifications of putting them off, and just to give everybody the best information to make decisions about it. So I guess I would ask Tony and Tom to.
I've given them a wireless, so we can go either way.
Yeah.
And I really think for us, it's understanding what FY '18 really means, and so Tom is the field expert, and so he's here to share his wisdom.
You're an expert in so many things.
Yeah, well, thank you. The concern on the field side with it being in FY '18 is that it requires the field to extend its life to 11 years. And our concern with the synthetic turf field is that while the use can be very constant over the entire life, the threshold at which we would want to not over the entire life, the threshold at which we would want to not use the field anymore comes very, very quickly. And we are at essentially eight years when we start the next school year, which is the end of the warranty period, not the end of the expected life, but the expected life shouldn't really go beyond 10. And if we're expecting that it has to go 11, which is where fiscal year 18 would be, there are only two ways to sort of guess that we could get 11 before we reach that threshold. And the one would be by remediating the infill, which means turning over the sand and rubber, potentially replacing lots of it, fixing seams and tears that occur in the later part of the life. And that's a good option, and we will probably be facing that very shortly, if not within matter of months after our independent testing results come back. But you can only do that so long before the fiber length is no longer sufficient to remediate the field at all. And at that point, you're waiting for one test period or one test analysis to come back that says, this field is either too hard and can no longer be remediated to make it soft, or it no longer has the traction coefficient that's required for a safe field. And at that point, we would be done using the turf. So option A is to remediate it and use it as long as we can, and then I think what has drawn the most concern among the users is that option B is to get to 11 years, you stop using it now, at the level that we use it now. And if you look at the field use schedule, we use it essentially seven days a week for about 10 months a year between school programs, community youth programs, and adult recreational programs. So to start scaling those back would be a difficult task. Which one of those things do we start to scale back? And how many of them do we need to scale back to try to get that 11th year? So that's our concern with it being in fiscal year 18, is that knowing we have to go three years out means that we are probably facing choices very soon about what to cut off of the use of that field.
Thank you. Are there any questions about the turf field? Thank you very much. Is there anything? Yes, please, Ms. Rogers.
I'd just like to say one thing, we really agonized over the field, we really did. And it was, the decision was made strictly on long-range planning, and we know that this could be addressed next year. We're not going to forget about these fields, we want the fields just as much as everybody else. But we wanted to see if there was a plan that was going to come out of the planning, policy planning committee that would give us more guidance next year. And so we felt that option A, the remediation, would help to get us through to 16. And then, once that decision is made that we're not going to be doing anything for a much longer period of time, then, you know, it comes immediate, it becomes an immediate need, and it goes right into the CIP and the budget, and that can all be done in 16. And we actually talked about moving it to 15, but, you know, because we want...
Start using it now.
Yeah, we want the fields to be at their optimum safety and usability, but we're trying to look at this from a planning perspective, and that's what we did.
Thank you. Would you like to give any update about Mount Daniel, your process, what's going on right now? And I know that you'd ask, I think, for representative from City Council to participate as well.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, and it's a very timely question. You know, we have an RFP out for Mount Daniel. The responses are due back tomorrow at 2:00 p.m. We don't know how many we will get, we know that we had about 35 inquiries at the outset, so we think there's a lot of interest in that project. And what Dr. Jones has been putting together is an extremely small committee that will work to review all of the RFP responses facilitated by our folks that help us with these things to narrow the field down to a smaller number that could then be considered by the school board and the community and others. And so it's coming on us fast and furious. Yeah, it's very exciting. We're anxious to see who's going to submit responses to us and what they're going to be like. For us, the process, just for people who would know, is we do have folks that help us with this, they'll get all the responses, they'll come through them with a fine eye and ear first to make sure that they're all responsive, completely responsive. Those that aren't will get put to the side. They'll then go through a second time and put together information about each of them, which will be brought to that small committee to evaluate the ones that are left and kind of float the best ones to the top for the community to consider.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Are there any questions about?
Mayor, Ms. Mayor? Thank you. Perhaps the Budget Finance Committee could talk about this a little further when we meet on Tuesday, but I just want to understand where you all are in relation to the timeline for Mount Daniel and GM Henderson. The proposal is to put off the process a year, and yet what you're talking about there seems to be more urgent and immediate than that.
No, 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 we're not putting off the process for Mount Daniel for a year, that's on track, and so we need to get these RFPs back, and we need to evaluate, and we need to get to the community and make a decision and get that puppy going so that we can get that school in time. It's really the GM and Mary Ellen Henderson.
Okay, so the process CIP incorporates your planning for Mount Daniel.
To be clear, the FY14, already adopted, CIP has $1 million for Mount Daniel, so that's the planning money that they're using now. FY16 proposes the $8 million for Phase 2, and 16 picks up the remaining $6 million for a full project total of 15.9.
Okay, so we're good on Mount Daniel. Now, carry that over then to the high school.
Yeah, so we're good on Mount Daniel, there's some money in the CIP for the HVAC replacement TJ that we know needs to be done, and Cherry, so those things are all good. With regard to the high school, we don't have a timeline for the high school at this point. I think this is one of the lessons we're learning in this process group is, and that's really part of our job, is to lay out a process and a simple timeline, high-level timeline for it, for us to just do the planning to decide about the high school. So we continue to put it in the CIP to keep it on the radar with the community and with the citizens, and to make sure everybody knows this is something that needs to be done. But at this point, we don't know how long it's going to take. And that, you know, every time that this group meets, we learn more that we don't really know how long it's going to take. So the first step is for this process group to come with a recommended process back to the school board and city council for discussion and adoption, and then to start to move down that process, which will be lengthy. I'm going to be really clear about that, it will be lengthy. So we don't see, you know, spades in dirt this year, next year, probably not the year after, it's going to take a long while to sort out that complex piece of land and all the things that we want to get from it, so.
Ms. Mayor Snyder?
Is that helpful?
Since we're on the subject of the process planning, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the school board and the EDA and the Planning Commission participants and staff. This is really a collaborative, collegial approach to dealing with a very exciting, frankly, opportunity. So I just wanted to put that on the record. There's another part of the CIP, the library proposal. Let me ask the Planning Commission, was there some dialogue with the library board over that? And tell me a little bit more about the thinking there, if you would, please.
There was dialogue, we met with them, I think we had two work sessions, and a lot of outside discussions. The first proposal that came back from their consultant was $23 million. When it actually came to us in the CIP, it had gone down to $18 million, and there was absolutely no parking. New libraries footprint had taken over any previous parking that they had. And it just seemed to us that it was not a practical matter to raise and build a new building without any parking. So we asked them to come back with a Plan B. And by the time they came back with the Plan B, we had discussed the probability that we would not be able to come up with a parking solution in the time that they wanted it to be on the CIP. And so, but we still know that they need a lot of work in that library, they have to make it ADA compliant. I mean, there are lots of things that need to be done just to keep the library going. And so we didn't want to totally put it so far out that it was useless to them in the short term. And we decided that they already had $6.7 million in there from previous CIP money, and so we added a little bit to it and put $8 million in there so that they could get to work right away on doing some of the things that needed to update the library. And they agreed that they would go back to the planning process and come back with something else.
And I would note, of course, I mentioned earlier, the Library Board of Trustees is here, and the Chair and several members, and the Director. I did have the opportunity to go to the Library Board of Trustees meeting last night and report in detail, again, the Planning Commission's discussion, and talk about options for some operating money, since they've closed out the contract with the consultant, to go back and see parking, rightsizing options, and do that over the next few months so that we could be teed up for FY16 CIP development.
If folks like to hear from, I mean, I have an interest maybe in hearing directly, Ms. Mary, for example, Mary McCallum, if you'd like to come up, if you have an interest in doing so, just letting you know your all's position on the library, the change in the CIP, if you're in agreement to what you just heard, that might be helpful to us.
Here you go, Mary.
Shall we dance?
Musical chairs.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor McCallum, Library Director.
And Cindy did come last night, explained fully what the Planning Commission had proposed in the CIP, and I believe it was the feeling of the board that they were willing to go back to engage the consultants and look at alternative suggestions and plans for the library. We are concerned about parking, parking is a problem now, and one of the suggestions by the consultants in the original plans were to put in a floor of parking underneath when, if the building was raised and rebuilt. Since that option is really kind of off the board in terms of the amount of money that's being put into the CIP, then there are other things that we're considering, and I know that dialogue has begun or will begin very shortly with other entities to talk about possibly shared parking of some sort, maybe a parking deck that could be shared, which would help ameliorate the problems with parking, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Another opportunity for further discussion, I think. Just to be clear, I remember attending some of the meetings where the board and the consultant presented and considered the report. They did come with a plan to provide parking.
Yes, they did.
As you said, it was the three-level, I guess four-level if you count the parking, right? Parking underground, two levels of library.
That's correct.
Optional level above for...
That's correct.
...space to grow or other community needs. And so it's not that the consultant didn't provide us with that information, we just want more options to be considered in regards to parking, is that? And do we have any reasonable hope that they're going to be able to provide that, or is this something that we, and by we, I mean all of us, Planning Commission, Library Board, City Council, are going to have to come up with conversations and deals that will make that happen? I'm just concerned about spending more money for a consultant who has already, I think, delivered a pretty fully-fledged product.
It was a, it was a fully-fledged object, and there was parking involved, 34 spaces for the library. It was underground parking, as Mayor Tarter mentioned, and the board chose not to put that forward, thinking that there was, it was a very expensive option. And so it went forward to the Planning Commission without that parking in there. They did, Cindy did provide a model with that parking amount in there to see how it would fit into the fiscal policy and that kind of thing. So it really is going to be a local issue, I think, in terms of the parking, if it is not provided onsite. And the only, really, the only way it can be done onsite is to underground it, unless you put it on top of the building. But you're looking at raising and rebuilding in order to do that, whether you put it on top or you put it below, I mean, that's the only place it can go.
Yeah, I think it's important to remember that the parking, essentially, the library essentially now has no parking, I mean, it has seven spots, but that's not nearly enough to meet any kind of need. So the question that I want to explore further, not tonight, but later, is, you know, do we, again, the community, hold the library responsible for meeting parking needs, or is that a broader community responsibility? And is it a way, is it a problem that we can share in common with other facilities' improvements? And I know it all gets gummed up, and we can't make any headway at all, and we need to make some headway, but that's the direction in which I hope we can go as we talk about this over the next six weeks. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from Ms. McMahon before she heads off? Thank you very much for your time, we really appreciate that and your hard work. Why don't we open it up to broader questions for Mr. Shields, for Ms. Messner, the school board, Planning Commission. Are there other questions on the CIP? Anyone at all? It sounds like it.
Well, I guess this is what I'm supposed to do, since I get to wear the budget finance hat. Just a couple to start, again, questions that I hope we'll consider over the next five or six weeks. First, on the transportation side, that's all great news, and I want to thank Vice Mayor Snyder particularly for his work in that area, because a lot of those great things happen because of regional funding formulas and all sorts of things that are way too obscure for any mere mortal to understand, and, at least this mere mortal. And staff, Cindy particularly, have done great work on that, and I think that's really going to be a terrific way to demonstrate to citizens, you know, we're collecting your taxpayer dollars and we're really delivering some goods. And so I think that's terrific. As you said, you know, the factory school, the TJ HVAC, you know, real projects delivering real value is something that I hope we can make a theme of this budget overall. One question to staff, which was on the funding of all these projects, the big projects, are we, we're still using 20-year, where's Mr. LaConde? I know he's...
Using the back.
Yeah, are we still using, we still using 20-year assumptions, or have we gotten the Phil's 30-year assumption chart plotted out yet?
This CIP is built on a 20-year financing plan. The Planning Commission did have that question in particular, and so I ran some scenarios on 25 and 30-year, and what you found, and we did it on the proposed CIP, you would basically end up paying $5 to $9 million more in interest over the life of it, and it didn't really save you that much on an annual basis for debt service. It may be $100,000 to $250,000 a year on debt service, but when you look at, you know, $5 to $8 million through the CIP, that was a small amount, and so the cost benefit and staff recommendation was not to do that because you paid so much significantly more in interest, so the project cost increased greatly.
Okay, so I hear you. I would like to see those numbers, because I would like us to look at that pretty closely. I mean, if the range is up to $250,000 a year and the cost is over 30 years, as you say, you know, I think we at least need to have the information and have a discussion about it. You know, the reason I ask this is, I view these facilities as, you know, facilities that should last for generations, multiple generations, not just 20 years. They should last for 50, 60 years, and it only seems fair for multiple generations to pay for them, or at least more than 20 years. You know, time flies, but I remember, you know, Tyler was just starting football when we put the new turf field down, and here it's already 10 years have passed, eight years, I guess, but of course he is almost all the way through college, so that makes sense. But anyway, the point is, I would just like to see that number expressed because it communicates that we are building buildings that will last, I hope, a long time, and that's going to come back and be a theme that I want to explore with the library, too, because I am, I personally at least, would like to know what the community is in for, you know, spending $8 million for a building that's going to last 20 years, or, you know, $18 million for a building that could last 50 years. I think that's a reasonable thing to put forward and ask people whether they want to choose A or B. The turf question is... The turf question is, you know, a stand-in for, you know, can we get on with this, I guess, because it's going to force, I mean, this alone won't, I guess, but in some ways it does force you to make a decision about where you're going to put stuff. You don't necessarily have to, you know, describe in detail what the stuff is, but if you could decide, you know, if your Process Planning Committee could decide, you know what, we're going to put the buildings and the fields here, whatever they look like, then, and if the fields were to stay where they are now, then you can go ahead with the turf field, and I assume that that might be one option that would be explored. But if we don't do anything, or if we just put it off another year, then there is not only a safety hazard, but there's a, you know, loss of use of revenue. I mean, that field is used for other purposes that we collect money for, we rent it to other teams. Again, you know, the clock is ticking, and I guess I'm trying to understand what's the difference between situations where we're not doing it sooner because we don't have staff, or we don't have critical information, and situations where we're not doing it because, you know what, the choices are really hard, and we just can't quite bring ourselves to make the choices. I want to make those choices as soon as we can.
Thank you. Other comments, Mr. Brug?
Yeah, I just had a, I just had a comment about the transportation projects, which I, which I do support, and also thanks to Vice Mayor Snyder for being our transportation guru. What I did want to just put on the table, and I've mentioned this a couple times now, this year, part of the effort to leverage the grant money is utilizing fund balance to the tune of about $800,000. So, and as we saw in the fund balance projections moving forward, we're going to be at the, at the 17%, which means $800,000 coming out of that fund balance is not going to be sustainable over the long haul, and the transportation needs go beyond just this year's need. So we're going to have to figure out a durable funding solution. So my ask is, until that's sort of sorted out and options put on the table this year, I'm going to be reluctant to sort of just give it, give it a thumbs up. And it's, it's an issue that we've known has been coming for numerous years. We've had various ways of dealing with it, with transportation overlay districts, which I'm not necessarily saying are the way to go, and we've just kind of put off saying yea or nay, other than just saying, we're going to put it off. And I think the time has come to figure out durable solutions to our transportation needs, and I think that's part of the overall issues that we face. So I think it's a key element of what our core objectives as a local government are, is meeting local transportation needs, and leveraging it is a great way to do that. So I commend our efforts, and specifically Vice Mayor Snyder for bringing that forward, but I want to just make sure that the funding is there, not just this year, but as we move forward, so we're not finding ourselves of where we're going to get $800,000 next year. So we need to have a long-term solution to that, and I'd like those options presented this go-around, and I'd like some decisions being made by the Council, and I would submit that we start making progress towards that, whether it's working with the Planning Commission and others on that this budget year, rather than putting it off until we're on the heels of the next budget, and everybody's scrambling to figure out where we're going to fill those voids, because we're going to have to have some difficult conversations surrounding that one item.
Thank you, Mr. Brug. Other questions, comments? I have a couple questions for you, probably mostly you, Mr. Shields. One, this is a discussion we've had previously, but in light of the recent capital expenditures and the various schools, I think it's wise to revisit our proffer amount for new developments to make sure they accurately reflect the true capital costs associated with new projects and new developments. I think we have some fresher numbers from, you know, recent additions and things like that we've done, and estimates of new work that's going to be done in the future, that we ought to revisit that number, make sure it fully captures the cost, because we have new projects, you know, right now we have one that we're staring at. Your number for the total capital improvements, did that include the storm sewer, or not, yeah, I guess it is storm sewer expenditures which are outside the budget? In other words, they're capital expenditures, although they're paid for outside of the budget. Did your numbers include that, or did not include that?
It does not. That's now in the utility funds. This is just general funding.
I got you. So when you add that number in, what is the total amount, if you add in the $900,000 in storm sewer? Do we have?
That's in the budget book, and I don't know, but the projections on all the debt.
It wouldn't be debt necessarily, I'm talking about just outlays, not necessarily debt-financed outlays, but.
Well, stormwater's 2.3, almost 2.4 million total, right? Stormwater?
For next year.
No, no, I'm sorry, it's 1.6 for 15.
For the budget, and the five-year CIP is $5.4 million worth of projects.
Okay.
You know, the sanitary sewer side, I think there's $12 million of debt as well.
Okay. See what else I've got here. How much space was vacated by, when the water system was sold, in terms of City Hall, you know, square footage, what percentage of City Hall was essentially moved out with the Water Authority?
In terms of square footage, Cindy will have that figure, but in terms of the space that she can imagine, it's the customer service space that's right next to the registrar of voters' space on this floor, and then over in Development Services, the director had three workstations there on that floor. So those are the two areas where our water staff are located in City Hall.
And it's about 1,300 square feet, and that space has already been reprogrammed into the City Hall Public Safety presentation that I gave you so that we can minimize expansion to the City Hall, but, and accommodate out-year growth, so we're not building something that's small. And so it would be used to take people that are out in this lower level that's not ADA accessible and improve our adjacency.
Okay.
It's currently still occupied, if people are wondering, because we still are dealing with water bills, and just to slightly clarify, it's only one office, but utilities only had two space. We actually still have a public work staff up there.
Oh, that's right.
So the third floor west wing didn't totally open up.
You awesome.
It's broken up, so it's not as functional as like a big space.
Thank you. You also mentioned two full-time hires for transportation capital improvements. Are those viewed as temporary full-time hires? In other words, they'd be hired with the understanding that this is based on funding, grant funding we have, and so your position is a, you know, one or two-year whatever assignment, or are they viewed as permanent hires for the city?
They would, their employment with the city would be contingent on there being these grants that need to be administered. We, when you look at the $36 million of grants that we anticipate getting, we believe that there's going to be work for them for the foreseeable future.
This is ongoing transportation money, and that 36 is at least 12 years.
In terms of advertising the position, we would not characterize it as a term position. We would characterize it as a full-time position, but we would have the understanding with the employees that if that money goes away, and those projects go away, then the position would be ended.
And you anticipate that this ongoing funding, grant funding, will continue to allow essentially staff to be used for that fund?
Yes.
Okay.
There's actually three grant sources, the 70%, the 30% in VTA, and also the revenue-sharing grant from VDOT.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Any additional? Mr. Brug?
I just had one follow-up, and I think, Mayor Tarter, you raise, you raise a very good point about the voluntary contributions, or proffers, or whatever we're calling them now. And it, and just, and it, for me, it's not just about schools, that's certainly we need to revisit those numbers, but it's, we're hitting various tipping points on other needs, such as library space needs, park needs, you name it, stormwater needs, a lot of infrastructure. I mean, I think it was one of our Planning Commissioners that raised the point that with some of the projects, we're seeing additional residents coming into the city, and I don't think all of the tax generation is capturing some of the immediate infrastructure needs that are going to be needed, and I think we need to revisit some of those aspects. And I know the position before at times has been, well, the tax monies generated by the projects will offset sort of the, the infrastructure needs, and I don't think that's the case, certainly not when it comes to transportation, park needs, et cetera. They, they just won't generate the immediate revenue that we need to see those projects, and I think we're seeing that now. So I think those are serious conversations we're going to need to have, especially with the population growth we're going to see. And again, you know, I don't want to raise the thorny subject, but in the single-family homes, we don't have much control over how that growth happens, but we certainly do on commercial properties that become mixed-use and have a residential component to them. So I think we need to take that account, and developers should be put on notice, given the types of needs that we're seeing on the infrastructure side, that just can't wait for the tax generations. They just aren't closing that gap.
Thank you, Mr. Brug. Other, Mr. Duncan?
It's my turn. Thank you. Could I do one follow-up? What Mr. Brug said reminded me that I wanted to make sure at some point in our process that we answer the question of whether the schools that we are planning to build sometime in the reasonably near future will accommodate the needs for the city population of 16,000 that Weldon Cooper has projected for us by 2030. I'm sure there's a, you know, extrapolation of how many kids that number of people throws off, and I think it would be very good for us to be able to tell the taxpayers that, you know, what we're doing here is going to hold us, because, you know, there have been instances where we did just as much as we could, and we found out as soon as we opened the building that it was full, and we absolutely must avoid that this time, because now more than ever, when interest rates are so low, we must borrow as much as we can to build as much as we need to accommodate the city's population in 2030. Second, I'm going to ask my budget finance colleagues if we could do a deeper dive into the City Hall project. Wouldn't be a complete meeting about the CIP without Phil griping about the City Hall project, so here you go, about which, on which Cindy has worked so hard that, you know, we should name the, we should name the building after her whenever some version of the darn thing gets built. But seriously, I, I still don't know the answer to the question, what are we doing? And when are we doing it? You know, are we, are we excavating the front and putting the underground garage in with Sally Port and all that? And you don't have to answer these questions tonight, but, you know, others have asked that question and not seem always very happy with the answer. I'm really less concerned about what the answer is than just, you know, let's just decide what we're going to do, and let's just do it.
Mr. Shields, and I had been tentatively planning to bring that back to Council in May, that the consultants were doing some more follow-up based on your questions, allowing you to get through this current budget deliberation, because I think the Budget Finance Committee agenda is getting full, but we'd be glad to do it sooner if you want to.
Mr. Tarter has cleared the calendar of the full Council, so the Budget Finance Committee has more options to meet, so.
Yes, sir. As a lowly member of the Budget and Finance Committee, I think I'm the vice chair, but thank you, Chair Duncan, of that committee for essentially taking on more work than I think that we can chew, and I think, you know, as one member of that committee, I think the agenda is very, very ambitious, but I, I think that, you know, we're going to, maybe after this session's over, we need to talk about some larger policy objectives and sort of where the Council is, and where the levers are, so perhaps the Budget and Finance Committee can sort of head up, head in a direction rather than wagging the rest of the Council, if you will. Maybe we get some direction as a whole from the Council, so we can begin to zero in on certain areas and come up with proposals, rather than sort of three members trying to figure it out, and the rest of the Council saying, are you guys nuts? And scrambling.
Actually, there are four of us, so you know what.
Is there four of us? I thought there was three of us.
There's four.
There's four, four of us.
Ms. Oliver.
So we actually are the dog rather than the tail.
Ms. Oliver.
Mr. Shields, I just wanted to ask a little bit more about the transportation. I know this is a very ambitious CIP for transportation, and I understand that a lot of this would be considered catch-up, work that was deferred, easy decisions to sort of push money off, and now we really do have to catch up. I'm also aware that there are probably other needs which are not included here, other things that the city would like to see, both for the quality of life for, for people, and also for providing something that provides an incentive for economic development. How much of what's in this plan is catch-up, and how much of it, how much more would we need for transportation if we, if we could afford it?
Well, about 3 million of it is reallocation of prior six-year monies. So that's a real quick answer of how much does that catch up? But in terms of the work that's going to be done, we have, believe it or not, we have bridges in the City of Falls Church. They cross streams, and many of them haven't been repaired for 50 years, since the developers put them in on residential streets. So we have a lot of catch-up work on sort of basic infrastructure, catching up on paving and things like that. In terms of what we can do with the money, also, it is driven by the rules, by the grantors, and so we would like to do more things on streetscape improvements in commercial districts, or utility undergrounding, and walkability, and that type of things. And sometimes there's limits to how much that type of work can be done with these funds. The state money in particular is all about expanding the transportation system, additional lanes is really what they're thinking, or new transit, which would be more aligned with our thinking. But we don't have a lot of those types of projects to do, and so we view pedestrian facilities as an expansion of the transportation system, and we're working that through, through VDOT to make sure that those projects get approved, and I think we'll be successful in that. Mike Collins is here, or Cindy might be able to.
I think you may have stiffed out.
Provide additional response to your question.
Yeah, I think it is probably a mix, and it's not quite 50/50, but if you look at in the CIP, the infrastructure projects, when we're talking about bridges and signals and signs, that's definitely maintenance and catch-up, and it's stuff you just need to do. Then you have the planning opportunity areas and the pedestrian accessibility, and those are more on the new side, Intermodal Plaza, new pedestrian crossings and traffic signals, doing the sidewalks, you know, some utility undergrounding is in there. So as a rough mix, I'd say it's 50/50, and to your point about incentives and for economic development, we've heard many times in the transportation world that if you build good walkability, pedestrian, and good road networks and good transit, and we do have bus shelters in the CIP, which I claim is new, because we have bus stops, but the shelters will be new, those transportation amenities also help with your economic development. And I think whether it's maintenance or new, it helps, because you can't have rundown and draw new business.
Can I just ask one follow-up question? I haven't heard anybody mention bicycles tonight.
Well, in the Intermodal.
I mentioned them, but very briefly.
Well, the CIP project goes for mobility for all modes, and that does include the bikes, as we talked about Saturday. But in particular with the Intermodal Plaza program, that is going from the city line of Fairfax County up to Annandale, and so it'll have transit, it'll have pedestrian sidewalks, it'll have roads, but it's also going to have sharrows and bike lanes, the hook to the Intermodal Plaza, because it will have bike racks, we're building in space for future capital bike share kind of things. It'll have water fountain and amenities. And that, for us, is a nice in-between from leaving Fairfax County, coming into the city, direct route up to the East Falls Church Metro, and on the metro main corridor routes on Broad and 29. So we haven't forgotten it.
Okay, unless there are any other comments or questions, why don't we move on to the schools' operating budget? If that's okay.
While she's doing that, each of you has a packet of information. Hey, it's not real.
Keep in mind, this is probably the third time some of us have seen, seen this as well, so.
Got it, got it. I don't want to surprise you.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's too much.
Whatever you think is best, but just keep in mind that, like I said, we. Thank you to our Planning Commissioners for coming out tonight. Appreciate it.
So all of you have a packet of information, and I thought it was just in the staff, the other, it's kind of like really two things.
Could you keep it down? Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Carney, may I turn your microphone, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The bulk of what you've got is the presentation that was given on Saturday at the Town Hall meeting. It's similar to.
It's similar to what you received the night that Justin stepped in for me and gave the presentation to you. There's a little more information. And then, starting on page 22, there's some supplemental stuff that we popped in here to answer specific questions we'd gotten from members of city council. So, what I'm going to do, and what I might suggest you do, is this page starting with 22, I just kind of ripped it off the back of this, because I'm going to refer to these things kind of intermittently as I go through this. I'm not going to go through this in a serial order. The second thing I want to let you know is I am going to move through this presentation at a pretty good clip, because you've seen, you've seen most of it, but I want to make sure, since I haven't had a chance to present it to you or answer your questions, that you get the same foundation of information. So, that's how we're going to proceed, and if you have, whenever you have a question, just, we can stop and I'll answer it. So, moving right along, starting with page one, some data we have about the rate of growth of our school division. In our budget that we presented to you, there are really just a couple of key drivers, and one is student growth. You'll see here on this, on the page that's numbered one, what our growth is, has been and is going to be, and how that compares with other jurisdictions here that surround us, and you can see that our growth is going to continue at a very high rate and is much higher than any of our neighboring jurisdictions. And so, while I know they're having lots and lots and lots of challenges and conversations in Fairfax about the money they need because of their incredible growth, their incredible growth is far less than ours is. And in Arlington County, it's, it's kind of peaked off, but ours has not. For those of you who are new to city council, we project student enrollment growth each and every year. We update our projections. We have projections that we feel are very good for about the four-to-five-year timeframe. We do our projections in two ways. One, the Weldon Cooper Center down at the University of Virginia, who are the folks who do these kinds of projections and work for both the state of Virginia and the U.S. Census, they give us their forecast for us. And then also Hunter Kimble, who's our chief financial officer, does a forecast, and we compare them, and they're amazingly close. The differences come in that Hunter is able to layer on top of the Weldon Cooper forecasts what we know to be going on in terms of economic development and residential construction in the city. And so, we have started over the past year or so now, we keep three forecasts. We keep a low forecast, what we think is probably going to happen, a middle-of-the-road, and a high forecast. All the information you're seeing in our budget is based on the middle-of-the-road forecast, not the high and not the low. So, that's just to give you a little bit of background information. So, a lot of growth. Another thing that we actually looked at for the first time this year that I think is fascinating, on page two, is that not only are we growing rapidly, but if you look at our community as compared to folks around us, we have a higher percentage of the people living in our community enrolled in our schools. So, we have more kids, and that's by a lot. Particularly, it's interesting, if you look at Arlington County, where they have less than 10% of their residents are enrolled in schools, and here we have about 17. So, there's a big difference there. And so, what does that mean for us in this budget? It means next year, we're going to grow 71%, that's 172 more kids we're expecting, and that's just about like adding a grade to our schools. Our grades are a little bit larger than that now, but that's just about like adding a grade. And if you look, you'll see that that trend is set to continue into the future in 2016 and 2017. I'm going to refer you now to this page 22 in your packet, which shows a longer timeline of growth. This was, we put this together in response to a question from Councilwoman Oliver about what our enrollment had looked like over a longer timeframe. This actually starts in 1950 and goes to today, so you can see how the growth pattern. One of the very interesting things is that growth in student enrollment generally does follow a cycle, and you'll have a top of the cycle, and then it'll drip down, and then it'll come to the top again. And you see that in this chart, where we kind of bottomed out in between 82 and 85. And I've been questioning both Hunter Kimble and the Weldon Cooper Center for the past few years to say, like, where are we in this cycle? Are we getting ready to top off? Are we getting ready to go down for our planning purposes? And what I've gotten from them is, we don't see it dropping off any time in the near future. In fact, starting last year, we are now getting, from the Weldon Cooper Center, we get a five-year forecast by year, we then get one for 10 years out, 15 years out, and 20 years out, and they're all continuing to go up. So, that's just more information for you about student enrollment. The second important component of the increase in our budget this year is teacher pay. Our teachers are way underpaid. I think you've seen this in the original packet. Dr. Jones, I believe, provided you with the, kind of the whole big picture, but the bottom line is, it's a bunch of money, whether you look in dollars or percents, and it's literally every lane, every step, that our, our teachers are paid less. And we need to catch up. The next page, it's not just Arlington. We look at Arlington, because that's where we're losing staff and recruits to at this point. We don't lose them to Fairfax, we don't lose them to Loudon or anyplace else. We go to Arlington, because it's really close by, it's a high-performing school division. It's relatively small compared to Fairfax, although big compared to us, and they can make a bunch more money. So, but that being said, I wanted to present you with information that shows you where we stand as compared to also Alexandria and Fairfax. And then Dr. Jones pulled an even more comprehensive chart together that shows you compared to the entire DC area. And so, there's just no kind of way, two ways to cut it. Our teachers are underpaid, we need to begin to pay them fairly, and this budget includes money to do that as the first year of a four-year plan to get us back to being reasonable in the way we pay our teachers. I'm going to pause there and see if there are any questions.
Any questions? I have a question. So, your four-year plan, at the end of four years, that would take you where? Equivalent to Arlington, above Arlington, above Fairfax? What's your goal?
Our goal is to be, we'll probably be 3% to 5% below Arlington at that point, somewhere in that range. We think there are still intangibles about our school division that will attract great staff. We are still relatively small, people do come here for some of those intangibles, so we're just kind of trying to get into shouting distance. And what Hunter and Dr. Jones have done is essentially taken where we are today, where Arlington is today, based on what they generally do, forecast out four years to where they're going to be, and then put together a four-year plan for getting us there. So, we would love to get to where they are, but we aren't really even trying to do that. We just need to get close enough.
So, you're basically trying to be second to Arlington as far as salaries go? That's sort of where you're aiming for?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's actually going to be very interesting to watch, because the Board of, the County Board of Supervisors in Arlington is kind of very proud of the fact that they're, they pay the teachers the best, and they're attracting the best there, and they intend to keep it up. If you read the Washington Post, you see what's happening over in Fairfax County. They're realizing that they've really kind of gotten off the path on this, and I'm not sure which, how she's going to be able to do it, but, but she's got her eye focused on it as well. So, there's, I don't see this staying flat around here, so that's a real challenge for everyone, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, with that as the background, the budget requests are here on page seven, and you've probably seen them. We're going to focus on the operating budget, because that's the largest one that requires the most money from the city. On page eight, I'll call your attention to the overall increases that you'll see here. On page nine, we did get a kind of a nice surprise from the state. Interestingly, this year, when we turned in our numbers of students to the state, they actually called us and said, "We think you made a typo, you couldn't possibly have grown this much." And we said, "No, no, yeah, we did." And, and so, we have gotten a pretty substantial increase from the state, about a 9.7% increase this year. The good news about that, it's about $300,000, it's about a penny on the tax rate, and that's very, very helpful for us. But you'll also notice, if you look on page 10, it's still, we don't get much of our money from the state. We just absolutely don't. Most of the money we invest in our schools comes from the people who live here. Our state and federal spending and others is incredibly small, and this is something that I know Vice Mayor Snyder is exceedingly well-aware of. I want to call your attention now to a couple of other things that were attached. Starting on page 23, you'll see for a couple of pages, there were some questions on Saturday about how the state decides how much money to give us, and it's a complex calculation that has to do with their belief about our ability to pay. It's called the composite index. We have a composite index of .8, which is the highest you can possibly have. Arlington also has this composite. And this is just simply a list of the composite index for everyone in the state, in case you don't have enough to do when you go home tonight and you want to look and see what the composite index is and how that translates into funding for us. We also have provided you, and this is the, these are the big legal-size sheets of the information that was requested by Vice Mayor Snyder, that would show the amount of funding and the percent of funding that all the school divisions in the state get from the state. And so, that's this page 25, these large sheets, and if you look in those, you'll see that, you know, Falls Church, along with Arlington and just a few other people, get very little money from the state. There are many jurisdictions in the state that get a third to a half of their budget from the state. So, but we don't. So, that's just a little bit more information to answer some questions that we had about sources of revenue. In terms of expenditures, I'll draw your attention to slide number 11, which shows how we spend our money in our operating budget. If you look at, there's this huge orange slice, 76.9%, this is instructional, this is what's in the classroom, working with kids. And then the other parts of the pie, you know, have to do with facilities and technology and admin and overhead and transportation and all those kinds of things, and they comprise the balance. We did this year have a third-party consulting organization essentially come and audit our efficiency and all of those things that are on the operating side, that are outside of instruction. The results of that study are available on our website, if you'd like to go read it. But the kind of the bottom line was, running a lean ship, not too much to cut back. They had a couple of suggestions. We implemented the ones that we could, the ones on transportation, would actually be more expensive, so we're not implementing those. So, we're running a pretty lean ship, and I guess the message I would have for you is that the place that's left for us is instruction. That's the place that's left. We can't cut central office and administrative staff any more than we have. We already have a CFO who also is head of operations, and a head of instruction who's also head of HR, and a CFO who's, I mean, you know, and, and then Tony's standing in and doing most of our facilities at the strategic level, so we've doubled up and we've cut back, and there's not much to cut there. So, anything we have to do to cut the budget will, from this point on, come from the classroom. So, which translates to staff, classroom teachers, specialists, support, gifted and talented, and those kinds of folks, with the exception of special ed, because there are laws about that. We have to do certain things in terms of special ed. I'm going to skip the next couple of slides, because you've seen them, they're simply talking about the cuts we have made through reprogramming and consolidation and postponing and things like that, delaying purchases of buses and that thing, the unfunded needs that we do have. And I'm going to go to page 14, where you see that if our request is fully funded, we will be spending per student about the same as we were eight years or so ago on an unadjusted basis, and then on an adjusted basis on page 15, it's really about 17% less. So, I know there are folks in town who think we're running a Cadillac system, and we have all kinds of fancy things going on in our schools, and we're spending a ton of money, but in fact, since I've been on the board, it seems like we've done nothing but cut back and cut back and cut back and consolidate and reprogram and cut back and cut back, and we simply, we just simply have more kids and we have to educate them. And that takes money to do. On slide 18, very simply, the three key components of the increase that we're requesting. One category is mandated items. These are things we must do by law. We have no choice in them, either to meet state standards of quality, special ed laws or other things, healthcare, retirement, all those kinds of things. So, these things we don't have much choice on. The second is equitable pay, which we talked about, and then the third would be growth.
Can I interrupt you just for a second?
Yes.
Maybe have you elaborate just a bit more on the mandated increases, specifically what those are? I know you alluded to them, but maybe with a bit more detail?
Yeah, yeah, and so, within that, there are a number of categories. One is there are certain staff that we must add by state law. And I'm, Tony, do you want to, I'll let Tony give you the details of that.
Okay.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. In Virginia, we're governed by the standards of quality, and it really is what you would consider a minimum standard that everybody must meet, and with standards of quality, it will tell us, for instance, when we need to add a media assistant and make that person full-time. So, at Mount Daniel, we've only had part-time media. We're big enough now, we have to have full-time staff. We also have, as Susan alluded to, the special education. We have mandated caseloads that we have to meet for special education. So, a lot of those mandates that are classroom-driven, and they're, they're not a whole bunch, they just add up very quickly.
But so, it sounds like these are not staff that you would add, you don't feel you need to add, but merely you're required to add. In other words, you're putting them under a mandated section.
No.
It sounds like-
No, 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 no. They're mandated, and we definitely need them. I mean, we need, standard of quality is very, it's a minimum standard, so that anybody in the state of Virginia where they're funded, well, what you see on the chart for state funding on some of the more impoverished areas, so they can also meet those standards of quality. We expect in Falls Church to definitely be able to meet the standards of quality in their positions that we, we need.
But so, those almost seem like they're more related to enrollment growth than being mandated. In other words, if you've got more students now, now you need to have an additional person. Seems like that's more related to enrollment growth than actually being, quote, required to do that.
Yeah, let me answer that. The way that Hunter and I try to go in and budget for that is that where we are right now, if the school board, you know, said to us, "We need you to cut your budget back", we, mandated is, it's there. We don't have any flexibility. When you look at things that are enrollment growth, that would be, okay, we're going to let class sizes soar, and we're not going to hire kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fifth grade, sixth grade. We're not going to hire the elective teacher for middle school. The fourth positions at high school has huge impacts for us instructionally. Those are enrollment growth. Could we not hire them? Well, if we want to have class sizes of 27 students or 28, that's growth, but the mandated ones we have to hire.
Thank you.
Yeah, is that helpful? And if you want more detail, we can, we keep lists of all of these things, and we can give you exactly what's in each of these categories in more detail than you'd probably ever want to know. Anyway, so these are the three key components, the mandated items, the pay catch-up, the first year of that four-year program, and then the things that are due to more students. The final thing is just wanting to put this request a little bit in perspective. If you would look on the page numbered 20, you'll see over time, the city transfer to schools as a percent of the city's general operating fund. With this request, we'll be a little bit north of 45%, although Wyatt calls it flat 45%, but, which is in the range historically. It's been sometimes a little bit lower and sometimes a little bit higher, but that's pretty much the average over the last decade, so it's, and we look at these things closely as we discuss the budget to make sure that we're not getting crazy, even though we have lots of kids. So, that would be the first thing. The second thing would be looking at spending per pupil for our school division as opposed to other school divisions. Once again, we're kind of right there where we need to be, not too high and not too low. You'll see Arlington spends more than anybody else, almost $19,000, in fact, with this year's budget, they'll be above $19,000, I expect. We're, we sit at about the same per pupil spending as Alexandria. They get a little more theirs from the federal government than we do, which was nice, but, but we don't. And then you'll see Fairfax County is a bit lower. Some things going on in Fairfax County that, that we think caused that are, one, their class sizes have gotten astronomical, 27, 28, next year probably in the 30 range, and they, some economies of scale, because their school division is literally 100 times larger than ours, and so they have some economies of scale that we don't get. So, once again, we think we're kind of right in the kind of middle, and that this feels to us like a place that it's not unreasonable to be in terms of what jurisdictions- So once again, we think we're kind of right in, in the kind of middle and, and that this feels to us like a place that it's not unreasonable to be in terms of what jurisdictions pay to educate their students. I think if you look at the percentage of operating spend in Arlington County that's for schools, it's generally in the 46, 47 percent range, just a little bit more than we spend here. And in Fairfax, it's generally 51, 52 percent range. So even as a percentage of overall budget, we think we're doing a, it's reasonable, we think we're doing a really good job here in terms of all of those things and, and getting great, great results for our kids and for the city and, which are outlined in my guest commentary in the news press today. When you get that, you can read it and that'll give you the whole story about the results that we get in terms of our graduation rates and our SAT scores and our post-secondary education and our locals, you know, and national championships and all the kind of great things that we do. We're also convinced, and I'm disappointed because we had hoped over the past year to complete a study that would quantify for us the economic value of the schools to our city, but we were not able to complete that. We will do it this year, so hopefully next year when we're sitting at this table, the new piece of data we can provide you is quantify kind of the economic benefit of having an excellent school system to our community. So we have that on our plate to do this year. And so, Mayor Charter, did I keep it not so painful for you?
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Very good. Oh, oh, the one, the last thing, is we get lots of questions about where the kids come from. And so we have updated that data for you. The answers, they come from everywhere. They come from single-family homes, they come from townhomes, they come from apartments and they come from condos. But you have a lot of data here, it's pages 29 and 30, and we'd be happy to answer, you know, any questions you have about that. And then page 31 is what we fondly call the Chauvin chart because we love Dave Chauvin. And this shows you revenue and expense over time by category for the schools. It's just a really nice bird's eye view of, you know, what's been happening since field school year 11 in terms of where we get our money and where we spend our money. So.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Mr. Baruch?
Yeah, just two comments. One, on page 23, which is the indicators of ability to pay. You know, while I value various data points coming in, I just, this one struck me as a little bit problematic in the sense of, it's an interesting factoid about what our citizens are able to pay, but if carried to the extreme, what this could lead to is if you don't meet sort of the index or the composite index that's provided for, no need to apply or move in because you won't be able to afford to live here. And I just think that we just need to be very cautious about using this type of data. If I'm understanding this correctly-
Let me be really clear about what this is and maybe you're not. The purpose of giving you this data is because we have questions about why do we get no money from the state? Right? I mean, why does the state get, we send tax dollars and plenty of them down to Richmond and very little comes back to us, like maybe 10 cents on the dollar or something like that. And so this is not anything that we create here in the city of Falls Church.
Understood.
This is the, what, this is what the state uses to calculate the amount of money that they give to us.
As long as we're using it for that purpose and that's-
That's the only purpose it has, and that's in response to questions we had at the town hall and from members of council. So this just, it's just a way to show you comparatively how the state thinks of us and looks at us. We have no choice about it. We would love for them to switch it up. I don't see that happening anytime in the near future, but this is just to answer questions about why the heck don't we get any money from the state?
That's great.
It's because of the way they rank us here.
And I think it's important to understand it publicly in that, in that context rather than another context.
Yep.
And then two on page-
Just a quick- Mr. Sher.
This also demonstrates, this also shows, in comparison to Fairfax in particular, why our request to general government is, is, has more pressure to it than it does in Fairfax. Because we, we get less money from the state per pupil than Fairfax does. So if, if we want to have the same equivalent amount of spending, we need to get it from the local side rather than from the state.
And then, secondly, on page 22, where we do the historical trends of the transfer, that does not account for CIP debt service.
No, this is purely operating budget. It's purely operating budget. And, you know, we did have a question again in the town hall and we've had the question, you know, on a few occasions about when you add capital in, how does that compare? I, I've asked Tony and Wyatt one more time to try to figure that out. As you know, in this state, unlike most states, school boards can't levy money. General governments do that, and the way it's done in our city is it's all kind of lumped together. It's not really tracked separately when done and then when refinanced. And so we've not been able to, in the past, to get a very good beat on that, but I've asked them to go and take a look at it once again.
I would just echo that that's going to be something important for us to do, both on the city side and on the school side, to kind of understand even with a footnote what the CIP overlay looks like, or else it's just not going to give us a clear picture as we move forward. As we've touched upon, you know, my view is, we can't do everything that the CIP calls for and do everything that we hope for on the operating budget. It's just, I, I don't see that, how that can happen. And until we get a sense of how the two are interrelated, I just don't think we'll be able to address those issues and figure out, you know, what type of, what type of possible diet we need to go on, on the operating side in order to meet the capital improvements. So I, I think it's critical for, for us to get that, that information.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you. I would say the, the other thing that we have our eye on early and often that's making us nervous is the interrelationship between decisions made about economic development and their effects on the schools. As I said, our enrollment projections are the mid-tier. We would be shocked for the lower tier to happen, but we're watching very carefully, North Gate for example, to see what that tells us about our financial models. And one of the things that people around town ask me all the time is about how many children we have and their growth. And from the school board perspective, we, we had, we don't have much control over that. From the city perspective, to a large degree, we don't have because people are going to buy and sell homes and they're going to expand their homes and move in with kids. But when it comes to some economic development, you know, we're, we're kind of keenly watching the interface between economic development and, and schools, just as you are watching the kind of interplay between capital and, and operating, so.
I may just do a follow-up myself on that. What kind of excess capacity are you building, for example, in Mount Daniel? In other words, what are your assumptions as to growth? Are they just basically organic growth, or do they also include a certain percentage for economic development?
It depends on what year you're looking at. We have included in our projections, and Tony can give you very specifically which buildings of economic development are included at this time in our mid-range growth. And then we have projections as well for if we see more, we can get that information to you. I'm, I want to say something that's maybe not going to be very popular, but I want to be really clear about it. At the new Jesse Thackeray facility at Mount Daniel, and at TJ, we are as much growing to meet the capacity of the land as we are to meet student enrollment.
How much should I follow you on that?
And once we, we've pretty much built as much school as we can build on the TJ land. We can't really expand that anymore. We have about 750 kids there, and, and so there's, so there's not much more to do at TJ. When we do this addition in Mount Daniel, we'll be in the same bucket. We won't really be able to build anymore at Mount Daniel, we'll have maxed that out. We're building as big a facility as we can over on Cherry Street in the Thackeray School that we're building. And so I would love, back to Councilman Duncan's comment, I would love to be able to tell you guys in the community that, that we are building facilities that will be able to hold the student enrollment in our elementary grades for 30 years, but we're not. And Tony will get back to, to us and will give you information about how long we think those buildings will last with low, medium, and high enrollment growth. But at this point, we're really building the maximum on those pieces of land because we know we're going to need it, and it'll last five years, six years, seven years, eight years, depending on what that growth is. But we're not building enough capacity at the elementary level for 15 or 20 years for sure. And so, and this is something that we're going to have to wrestle with in the future because we don't, we don't know where to build next.
So Mount Daniel, go ahead, Mr. Sher.
Well, I wanted to thank Wyatt for putting together this chart. I think you may have it also.
Yeah, I've seen it.
We went over it earlier. And it begins to plot out the impact of revenue that we could expect from development and how that could, could help us in the future to afford the increased capacity as, as we, as we build it and as we have to build it later on. I did have a, a detail about this chart later as to whether it, it reflects individual projects or whether it's just a, a sort of placeholder, but it, it does begin to get us that way and I'm, I'm very grateful that we've started this.
Right. So we feel confident when we get, when we get to putting shovels in the ground at the GM campus, that we'll be building plenty of capacity for quite some time in the middle school and the high school. But, but we think we're still going to be challenged at the elementary level. So, so I just kind of want to be transparent about that. We're building the capacity of the land. It will last us for some amount of time. Depending on whether we're at the low, medium, or high enrollment growth, that timeline will move out. And we can provide you with information about those low, mediums, and highs, whether it's just mediums, that would be helpful.
And I think that support, order to spend, I mean, Mount Daniel, I think in the CIP, was it, did I see 15 million?
Mm-hmm.
Is a lot of money, especially if it's been the last six years or seven years with capacity. That's-
Well, and I think the bigger question is, past that, if we need another school, where do we put it? Because we don't have land for it, right? And there's, we, we can't add anymore to Mount Daniel, we can't add anymore to TJ, there's no room, you know? So these are conversations to have.
Mr. Mayor, so just to follow up on this point. Managing the number of new residential units in the city becomes a very important issue.
Yes.
The pure physical ability to house additional students can be run up against. Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's important. Yeah, it's something we watch carefully.
Other comments, questions? Mr. Duncan, you've got that look in your eyes. Did you have another?
He's raising his hand.
I do. Is my microphone working? Yes, okay, sorry. I thought maybe it was turned off because I exceeded my limit. Yeah, not yet. The mayor threatens. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Someone's kicking it down.
Can't quite give it on my own yet, but I'm, I'm getting there. But it's a lot of good stuff in here, as you read the blogs and, and the comments and the letters that we're getting and some, you know, something close to a wave now. There are some of these questions about the audit of efficiencies and so forth that you have answers to, and, you know, I just personally just don't have time to respond to each of those inquiries. And so I think we need to set up some kind of response mechanism as we go through this budget over the next six weeks to, when we see a question that is out there, it's like, you know, this week's designated person who is going to answer that question is so-and-so. And I don't know whether it's a school board member or a staff or, but I think we do need to be able to respond to some of these very, you know, reasonable questions being asked. What I wanted to ask was-
Can I just respond to that quickly?
Sure.
The way we handle it on the school side is every time we get a question about the budget, we respond to that person and we post the question and our answer on the budget page under our FAQs to make sure that it's available to the entire community. If you folks are getting questions that are related to the school budget, what we would request is that you ship them over to Dr. Jones. We'll answer them for that person. We'll copy all of you on the answer so that you know what it is, and we'll post it on our budget page with an FAQ so that everybody in the community has access to it. That's what we found is the best way.
Okay.
And then the ones that we are hearing the most frequently, we will, in our daily announcements, we will run those questions and answers in the daily announcements because hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people read those. So we, we do try to get those responses out. So send them our way.
Good, okay.
Not yours. We don't want your questions.
When the GovOps committee meets on Tuesday, now that's a committee that Mr. Baruch is not on, so I'm not saddling him with more work, but we'll, we'll maybe talk a little bit about that communications aspect.
I'm happy to take on more work.
Well, okay, that brings you to my next point, which is the Budget and Finance Committee, I hope, will have an opportunity. I know we'll have an opportunity. But actually, to agree with Nader, what he said earlier, you know, this is so big that obviously what we're talking about here, the operating budget, is going to be a topic that all of us are going to, you know, be talking a lot about over the next six weeks. And, you know, I'm confident we'll come to a conclusion that is, you know, the right one, the best we can do, good for the community, you know, the people who are involved. You know, you've got a school board that has two council members, you've got a former council members, you've got a council which is heavily populated with people who have or have had kids in schools. You know, I, I think we have the right cast of characters and Mr. Baruch, who will have, he's the man most invested in all this because-
That's right.
-some of these buildings we're talking about actually may be open by the time his child graduates.
Right.
You know, my, my son will be coming back for his 30th reunion, I think, by the time we get some of these done. But at any rate, I digress as I do. Yeah, my grandson. I'm confident that, that we will come to a good spot. We will have to, I think, have some serious and sustained conversations because I, I'm just struck by, you know, how, how much we want to be like Arlington. And your own numbers show, you know, their percentage of students is, is very low, it's like 10 percent. And yet they're able to throw off, you know, teacher salaries, facilities improvements, all these marvelous things that make us all want to be like Arlington. And how are they able to do that? He asked. The answer is with you-know-what intensive commercial, residential development of every kind, way, shape, and form. And you know what? We're not willing to do that here in Falls Church, and, and that's fine. We are not Arlington. We don't want to be Arlington. Those of us who moved here, I moved away from Arlington to live in Falls Church because I wanted a smaller community. But I'm just saying that, you know, there are implications to the choices that we make about development here that ripple all the way through every budget that we all work on. You know, the two projects now on the docks, Kensington and Broad and West, it has not escaped my notice that the revenue, the net revenue, the net revenue after public service costs are accounted for, would cover the gap in the budget that the manager's identified in his presentation. You know, it's just as simple as that. All right, you know, part of what we have to do over the next six weeks is, is try to keep generating economic activity and development however we do it. Part of what we have to do is talk seriously about, you know, what we are going to be able, I think, what's our plan? What's our plan for addressing things that we all agree need to be addressed? And how many years is it going to take to get to it? We're doing it with facilities, you're doing it with salaries, you know, we just have to, I think, plug the numbers in and then ask the community, you know, what are you going to be able to, how are you feeling about this? And I do think it does need to be a dialogue. In closing, just one specific question. I asked Tony today earlier, did you get a number on, how much do you guys pay for rent on central office?
Currently, right now, this, the school board is paying about $270,000.
Okay, 270 K a year for central office?
Yes.
Okay. Speaking only for myself, I would consider it to be a, you know, a bad day's work if I approved a city hall improvement that did not include space for the school board so that we could save that 270 K a year. That's not quite a penny, but it's almost on the tax rate. And I, I just, I think whatever we do with city hall needs to get us out of the business of paying rent for any government function, particularly one that is so critical to our mission as the schools. Thank you.
I would, I would respond to that, that we're aware of that. Actually, our preference would be to put our, our offices in one of the schools. As we build on the GM campus, that would be our preference, would be to put our, to be closer to our students. We do love the staff at city hall, but to be closer to our students.
I just wanted to respond to a couple of things, Councilman Duncan. The first is that we understand there does need to be dialogue. I wanted, I want to be really clear that as a school board, we had more work sessions, more public hearings, more discussion deliberation than this year, than, than probably any other year. It was a very difficult decision for us. We're well aware that this is a bigger increase than anybody had hoped we would ask for. We're aware that there are other pressures in the city. We discussed six, seven, eight different scenarios for our budget that we were going to present to you. And at the end of the day, what we came down to was that the only way, the only things to cut out of what we've presented to you were staff in the classroom. That's really the only thing that's left, which means not servicing the kids and having larger and larger and larger classes. And we did a bunch of work over the past few years to get our class sizes back down again. And so- And so we don't make this request to you lightly. We understand what's going on in the city. But at the end of the day, we felt that our primary responsibility was to do what we felt was the right thing for educating the kids in our schools. The second thing I want to say is, we don't want to be Arlington County. We do want to stop losing staff and teachers to Arlington County. We want that a lot, because we're losing some of our best. And we didn't used to do that. We think our school division is a better one than Arlington County. Our results are better. We think there's some special things about our school division here, and we want to hold on to those things. But it's important to not lose our best staff to Arlington County. So that's why we, that's why the pay thing. We do compare ourselves to Arlington, because they are in term, even though they're 10 times as large as we are, they are the closest in size of a high-quality school division in our area. You know, comparing ourselves to Manassas City or Manassas Park or, you know, Fairfax City and those, they aren't really as close a comparison. We don't compare ourselves so much to Fairfax, they're just way too big. It's just a completely different ballgame. We do look at some of that data, because people in this community look at that data. The last thing I'd say is that, at our last meeting, our school board did agree to ask City Council to create a joint school board-City Council Working Group on Budget and Finance. For any number of years, we've gone through this budget process, and at the end of the day, we've all sat down and said, phew, we should find a better way to do this. And then we all go off and do our jobs. We, we go off and do what City Council should do in the community and the schools. And then here we are another year, and we haven't had that conversation. So we'd like to suggest that we put together a small, roll-up-your-seeds working group for City Council and School Board to discuss very specifically, is there a better way to manage the budget process on a forward-going basis? We're a small community, we're a tight-knit community, we should be able to find ways that work a little bit better, in spite of the fact that our General Assembly has intentionally set up a contentious process for us by having the school board focus on schools and report to the Department of Education and have City Council worry about the money side. So that would be the first thing that this group would do. And then the second thing I think that deserves a rich discussion is the fact that it's not just last year and this year, it's going to be next year and probably the next and many years, where the growth in student enrollment is going to be much more than the growth in revenue in the city. And I think rather than each year individually trying to tussle our way through it, it'd be great to have some smart people step back with the support of staff and see if we can find some, some strategies, some other ways to do it. So we would request that you folks get on board with us with that, and that we kick it off as soon as we get through the process this year and take a deep breath and get ready to start something else.
Thank you. Mr. Bruke?
So on that note, I do want to get back to sort of this long-term planning issue as far as budgeting goes. And I, and I want to tie it back into a comment that Councilmember Duncan made about economic development and the fact that was submitted that the net proceeds from the Kensington and what's being proposed, and one of the other developments, would cover the gap that we're currently facing for this year's budget. And I think that's relatively, if the numbers bear out, a true statement, but that's for this year. That doesn't address the next year, if we have further growth, the year after that, and the year after that. And I don't think that Councilmember Duncan is saying this, but I do think that, that will lead to a pattern of chasing development, and will put the city at a position of weakness, where we will become in need of development just to cover operating costs, and we'll be in a position of taking projects that we may not otherwise want. So I just think that we need to proceed cautiously with that mindset. I think economic development is certainly a piece of how we need to handle our budgets moving forward, and that we have a need for economic development. And that's part of what needs us to get, get us through with the budget issues that we're having and the capital needs that we have. But it's only a part of it. But I would just caution against that that's going to be a fix. I just think that that, again, will lead us to a position of weakness rather than strength. I think we want to make sure that we have the budgetary discipline that allows for true economic growth, rather than having to deal with projects on a year in, year out, just to make, make the budget, if you will. And again, I don't think that's what Mr. Duncan's saying, but I, I just do put the caution out there.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder, Vice Mayor Snyder.
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. I hope we're enjoying this face-off. I'm not seeing a lot of conflict here tonight, so with all due respect to our editors who's here, this face-off, I think, is more about how we jointly work together for the benefit of the community than it is any unnecessary conflict, so, in any event. I just thought, thought I'd make that point. Although it's getting late, so I guess it could still get ugly, but in any event. A couple of quick questions for you. One of the things that I asked for when the, when the city manager made his budget presentation is for each of our managers to give me some idea of everything else being equal, if the tax rate were 121 as opposed to the proposed one, the current rate, or whatever. I would like some sense, because you really do get what you pay for at the local government level. And so I think it's important, for those who say, just cut the rate, it's too high, just cut the rate. I think people ought to know what the impacts on the schools would be, and they need to know what the impacts on the city would be, so that the community is better prepared to understand why we make certain choices that we do, because on our watch, we're not going to let the schools deteriorate, or on our watch, we're not going to let the police response time double, and on, and on, and on. So I would ask for that as we proceed through here, peg various levels of service to various tax rates. The second point, which I want to make, and thank the schools for two sets of data, the data resulting from development and the data on the, the state funding. Again, to reiterate, we get 8.1% of our school budget from the state. There are other school systems that get 30, 40, 50%. They also get much more per pupil than we do. And my sense is that these, these formulas, which may have made sense at one point, are way out of line right now in terms of reality. So the inability to change that is clearly special interest politics of the worst type in Richmond, or geographic politics, I don't even know what you call it. But it, it's just, and it's helpful, it doesn't solve our problems, but it's helpful for our citizens to know, they think that if they're paying sales tax, most of that comes back here. It doesn't. Income taxes, it doesn't come back here. So we have to do everything we need to do fundamentally within our two, two square miles. So I thank you for that. The next point I want to make, because the development issue came up tonight. The reality is there are some good, good mixed-use projects on a net basis, and there's some bad ones. And we need to learn from the experience, which, again, you've well documented, and I appreciate that, and the data. And I, I will reflect back to the discussion earlier this week about West and Broad. The reality is the numbers that were put out were developer numbers, they were not final numbers. And furthermore, I don't, I asked what was the basis, because when you produce numbers like that, you make certain assumptions about commercial occupancies. Well, in one point, we were told it was going to be a drug store, which I don't think got a lot of support. But then, the night of the presentation, it became vaguely retail. Well, what are the assumptions for this, if we're going to talk about that particular project? So I'm hopeful that we'll get more information as that project goes on. So I'm unwilling to jump to a conclusion that that project is either good or bad at this point until I, I know more. And as we said from our own history, some mixed-use projects have done very well, and others have been disasters, and we need to, to learn from that. The mayor asked a key question I was going to ask, which is on the mandated, because, again, it helps us understand what the state mandates versus what the state really pays for. So hopefully, we can get that. And I look forward, you know, we've got a number of weeks left in this budget process. I appreciate all the work that you've done as a school board and as a school community to maintain the quality of the schools, because we all benefit from that. And the work that you've put in to try to be as fiscally responsible as you can. We'll have questions as we go along, I'm sure, and I look forward to continuing to work with you, because you and we will not allow the schools to deteriorate. And that's the bottom line with respect to the schools. It's also the bottom line, in my view, with respect to the city services as well. So thanks a lot.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder. Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to thank the school board and all those hard-working people, the, on the school staff that have spent, burned out many Excel spreadsheets in arriving at this. And the PowerPoint, as they say. It's, it's clear that you've done a lot of work on this, and, and particularly, the school board has made some very difficult choices, as you've said, and I do appreciate that. You're saying that you have spent quite a lot of time getting to this point, to present us with a budget. And there are some weeks left in deliberations. I think that, once we have a whole basket full of data points that we need, that I would suggest that, as council, we go off somewhere and, instead of saying kumbaya, just, you know, have it out and see where we are, so.
Face-off.
Yeah.
That's a face-off he was talking about.
I think it'll have a, a good result. You know, I think that my, my position going into this is that the school board is, is in the best position to inform the needs. And, and so, given that, I just came up earlier today, a rubric that, you know, they say a three-legged stool is probably the most stable thing that you can think of. So we're going to approach this with leverage, logic, and love. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Z. Other...
So as I've listened, almost all the things I wanted to say have already been said. There's just one question that everyone is assuming, and I hate to...
That shouldn't stop saying all of your...
I know. But I hate to be the one to bring it up, but I'm going to bring it up anyway. This goes back to Cindy's chart, and it's page eight, and it's the fund balance. And it shows our fund balance between 12 and 17%. And I know our policy is a 12% floor and a 17% ceiling, and I'm just wondering, why do we have to be at 17%? Can it not be at 16%? Can it go down and come back up? Can we spend it down a little bit, and then with the surplus, bring it back up? Mr. LeConde, I'm...
As I said, I'm sorry I'm bringing this up, but I really think it's something we need to think about, that we have this, we have a policy of 12 to 17%. And why aren't we, we've talked about every other way to raise money, spend money, save money, and this is one that hasn't come up. So I'm just putting it out there to see what other people think about that.
Thank you, Ms. Conley. Any, any other comments? Ms. Oliver?
I just want to say that I know that we have world-renowned schools, because as I have said, you know, I've heard people talking about this school in New Delhi, India. And I know that it's talked about in other places. And I know that, as a city, we're extremely proud of our schools. As I go to different boards and commissions, people are quite passionate about trees or other items. But when they talk about what Falls Church is all about, it's trees and the schools, you know? So the, the schools are always in there. And I've, I've served on two school boards, and I understand all the hard work that's gone into this. And everyone wishes there was some magic, magic answer. And I think it's just very, very painful. I think we'll get through it this year, but I think that the bigger challenge for us is figuring out how we're going to continue to do this. We'll get through this year, but I'm really worried about next year already.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Any other comments or questions? Well, then, why don't I just end with that, going to thanks of my colleagues. We appreciate all the hard work. We know we've been to town halls and the like, and seen all that you've put together. And we appreciate all the work that you all do to keep our kids the best education. I know we both have, we all have the same interests at heart. So we'll be talking more. We thank you for coming out tonight and sharing, sharing this information with you, and we continue the dialogue coming up shortly. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Alex.
Thanks. Unless there's anything else, should we adjourn this meeting then? Okay. Thank you.